I just wanted to thank, I've never met Principal Welch before, face to face, man to man, but I wanted to shake his hand right now and then tell you a little story. So through all this COVID nonsense, we'll call it, over this, I get his emails, I talk to people, I talk to friends, I talk to my boys, specifically my older one, he's kept these kids in the game. His videos the other night at that dance when his kids were jumping around having a ball, being kids, that grown man right there has fought for these kids, and I thank him for that. I know he's in a tough spot, but that's leadership. He's doing everything he can do to keep these kids in the game and keep their heads in the game. Alyssa Wright, thank you so much for being responsive to my emails and including our data, which is everybody's data, it's science. Now, to the board, I just have a quick question. I can't address one of you individually, so as a whole, do you know how many admits there are in Summit County hospitals of kids under 18 years old with COVID? Does anybody know? Kids born or living in Summit County, there's 13. The entire month of September, 13. And I may go to Akron Children's, there might be 20, but they pull from different counties. There's 13 kids. Phil, all those charts, they're beautiful charts. Oh, God, I love math. All the colors, it's beautiful. You look at California, you look at Texas, you look at Florida, every single chart is the same. Mass or no mass. It's nature. It's going to be here next year. I see the same thing every single meeting, but I'll say it again because it's the truth. This is endemic. It's going to be here next year, it's going to be here the following year. We've got to learn to live with it. 13 admits, the entire month of September. How many millions of kids? I don't know. Is there a million kids? I don't even know. There's 11 million in the state of Ohio people. So I'll let you take that. I won't use the comment I always use because my wife gets kind of annoyed by that, so I'll keep that to myself, but there's 13 kids that are sick, real sick right now, in the entire county. So when FARS law takes effect again, when this wave goes down, like it is in Florida right now, they're down 75%, just remember, it's going to come back again. These mitigation strategies don't do anything. We wish they would. We think that we can control this. We can't, it's nature. Let these kids have a choice, let the parents have a choice, and just, we respectfully ask you, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name is April, I'm from Hudson. So I wanted to start with a little joke that I found in a book. It states, "What is the difference between a fag and a refrigerator?" I don't know. A refrigerator doesn't fart when you pull the meat out of it. This is one of the books that is in our library. This is not political, this is about our children. Along with this book, I want to read something else. But there's one thing I've never told Nick in a million years, not that it really matters, in fourth grade at a church youth group meeting, out in the bushes behind the parsonage, I touched Doug Gobble's, D-I-C-K, and he touched mine. In fact, there were eases and mouses involved. It's not something you think about all these years later, except Gobble's the hottest real estate agent in Kissnap. I would like to go on with other things in here, but in all honesty, as a mother of faith and a family that we teach, this is disgusting. This book is disgusting. Not only does it refer to gay people as faggots, which is completely against anything in this country we live in right now, it describes multiple sex scenes, men on men, anal, any, I mean, I, lawn boy. Anybody? Lawn boy?
No, thank you.
This was in the media last weekend. If you guys are doing your due diligence in investigating, my instincts would be to immediately go to the libraries and see if this book is here. I texted, I went online this morning, looked in your database, typed in sexuality, this book came up. I texted my 14-year-old son, hey, go check this book out. He was readily available, he brought it home today. That's how quickly this stuff, this smut, is in our children's hands. And it doesn't necessarily fall on you guys, but it falls on somebody. Who is going to be held accountable for this? This needs to stop. And I understand we all have the best welfare of our children, but someone needs to be held accountable for this. I just would like to know, who is in charge of protecting our children? Because I understand-
Thirty seconds.
-we can only do it in our homes, but then it comes to you as parents and as teachers who are with our children eight hours a day. You have the responsibility that us as parents do not have, on a daily basis, every single day. You are with our children more than we are with our children. I would like to know when this stuff is going to stop. And again, I'm not here as a political whatever, I am here as a concerned mother. I have four children in this school district. I love the school, we moved here for this school district. I just would like to be proud of the material my kids are reading and bringing home.
Ma'am, your time is up. Can you restate your name and address, please?
I don't want to give my address because last time I spoke, I got hate mail. My name's April. I can get with you afterwards if you would like. Or Mr., Phil, you know who I am. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you very much, Board members, for permitting me to speak. My name is John Stover. I'm president of Ohio Value Voters and also a board member of Protect Ohio Children. As was stated by this last resident here in Hudson, I do reside in North Royalton, let me just state that as well, but I'm here because, you know, all of us in the state of Ohio want to see what's best for our children. And, you know, there has been an influx of unfortunate pornographic material. I will, I will state, I will state at this point in time, if anyone here that feels that what I'm stating is incorrect, when I'm finished speaking, I'll be more than happy to stand out back, I'll show you what you can find Superintendent Herman, in Info Ohio. You need to do something relative to acting as a portal for the Hudson School District for Info Ohio. I have it here. I made one copy because I don't even feel comfortable showing this to someone of the opposite sex, much less thinking that a grade schooler can log into Info Ohio and gain access to this material. ORC 2907.32, pandering obscenity involving a minor or impaired person. This material, Mr. President, Board President, Mr. Herman, if I was to stand outside the very schools here in Hudson or anywhere in the state of Ohio, I could be charged with a second, third degree felony for this material. I have a copy of it, I want to provide to the superintendent. I also have my cards here for all members. Please contact me. You know, we heard earlier about how you acted decisively regarding 642 and the College Credit Plus program. I'm hoping that this district will act decisively relative to not acting as a portal for Info Ohio until they clean up this site. Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Parents, thank you. Normally I stand over in the corner, I'm a reporter for Ohio's Voice.com, but my daughter is planning to move here with her children, my grandkids. I live in Fairview Park, I'm a citizen of Ohio. COVID is an emotional issue, we can all agree on that, but you're missing our facts and figures and legal definitions. One, you guys keep referring to these kids as students. Students belong in college. The kids that are in these schools are called pupils, that's a legal definition. Secondly, vaccines are called emergency use authorization. They are experimental. No vaccine has yet been approved. Despite wordsmithing by Pfizer and the news, there is no approved vaccine yet. They are still experimental, emergency use authorization. Secondly, there are mandates, there are legal mandates, there are illegal mandates. One of the legal mandates is that school boards, like yourselves, are required to take an oath to the Constitution of the United States and Ohio. I assume you've done that. Are you aware of the ramifications for not following that oath? Are you aware of the Constitution of Ohio? Have you read it? Have you read Article 20, Section, Article 1, Section 21, that states there is no legal health system in Ohio? These mandates that you're provided to by these boards of health, they have no legal jurisdiction in Ohio. There can be no quarantines, there can be no masks, there can be no vaccine mandates in this state, as the Constitution says. They are illegal. All these ordinances that you're quoting, they can't, the Constitution of Ohio supersedes those. You can look it up. My name is Brad Linette, Bradley, actually.
Excuse me, just, excuse me, let's maintain order and listen-
Let me further state-
The comments.
-that because of this-
Thank you.
-this constitutional stuff we found, I'm not an attorney, but I've spoken to plenty, I've been to tons of these school boards, about over a dozen, I should say tons, I normally stand in the corner and report, but I have to speak up with this one because this is the worst one I've seen. They filed a writ of mandamus against Dewine- Thirty seconds. ...ago Friday, that's fine. He's been stopped from mandating anything in Ohio. He came on the news that Friday evening and said, hey, listen, I'm not going to, I'm not going to support Biden's mandates, like it was his idea. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Karen Mateer, a lot of you have heard my voice since May. I have made questions, I have asked for consideration, I have stood here for parents, I have asked for affidavits to present information to the board, and parents are too afraid, afraid of their teachers. I'm not saying all teachers are bad, I'm not saying all teachers are rogue, but if you bully a student in a classroom because they don't agree with your political decision or choices and you badger them, who's there to protect the student? If you can't use your iPad that is school provided because it's inadmissible in court, what protects the student, the most important thing in your room? I have asked for transparency. I want everybody to know that I will be done talking after tonight, because I was told today- I was told today, because of my voice, I created a difficult conversation for a person I thought was mutually understanding, and I resigned from that position, supporting our students, because if you want to mask our students, it is abusive, it is wrong, it is not here to protect you. You got your vaccines, you got your days off. I worked through that entire pandemic. I saw people living and dying and by themselves. So don't sit here and say the parents don't have a right to stand up for their students because all of you are wrong. I have asked for an anti-bullying program, and I got to watch Mr. Welch on the sixth district talk about it, because it's important. If you guys can't protect our students, then teachers are going to have parents sitting in the classroom watching you. If we can't record you and listen to what you're saying when you decide to have a political statement against students for not having the right to speak their voice, then you're going to have parents sitting in your classroom and maybe videotaping you with their phones, because that's what needs to happen, because you've lost all of our trust. Thank you for the previous mayor's, I appreciate the input. The mayor of Hudson did what he thought was the right thing to do, and I support him. He put his foot down and said enough is enough. Everybody has an opinion, right? Everybody has other things, too. We know that statement as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, please. Mr. Zero, Mr. Zero, it might be appropriate, over here, to your left. Mr. Zero, it might be appropriate to remind the audience to not comment, refrain from making comments during other people's, we're trying to maintain a level of civility here and order, and, I mean, I appreciate the passion of everyone in the room, but I think that might be a worthy thing to remind folks of. Thank you, Tom, for that reminder. Yes, please. In the blue sweater, I think, yes, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is Raya Daly, I live at 132 South Main Street here in Hudson. I've got a couple of things to say, and I would like to start by saying that our country, I'm a naturalized citizen, by the way, and I was born in Finland, and I, we were vetted economically, health-wise, and politically, so I believe I have a right to say something about this, and we're taxpayers, too. Our culture here in the United States has gone downhill, it has gotten coarser since 1960s. I'm old enough to remember that, and farther back. But my problem is that the school, not every teacher, because there are many good teachers here, I've heard, but many, many schools, including this one, has added on to the coarseness of our culture. I have seen some of the books that the children read, some in the library, they're not uplifting, the vocabulary is not good. And I put on my glasses so I can see something. Two more, two more thoughts. So Hudson schools ought to have higher standards in their reading material, as well as proper dress and behavior, encourage proper dress, proper behavior, etiquette, rather than allowing anything goes. And secondly, I would like to commend and thank Mayor Schubert for that. I just thank him for standing for proper values that made the national news. Now that it's national news, look at the positive side of it. More parents will be interested in their children's reading material and writing material, rather than being in the dark, that's not nice. So this outpouring of news is good, in my opinion. And, there it is. And also, third, third item is, don't be deceived by this audience. They're organized, very well organized. But I believe I represent the silent majority. More people think this way, too. Proper values-
Thirty seconds.
-and behavior. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Excuse me, the lady in the red is next, sorry.
Thank you. Heidi Fur, Gress Drive. The Bible tells us, "The truth will set you free, but Satan is the father of all lies." I know, I understand that you are under tremendous pressure to mask and vaccinate the students. Hudson School Board has been promised a total of $1,598,773 from the CARES Act, SARS and American Rescue Plan, of which $853,961 is ARP money that hasn't even been printed yet and is tied to your following, the CDC operational strategy for K-12 schools. Governor Dewine has done that big presser with three, or maybe it was six, big children's hospitals to tell you children are dying from Delta. And his ODH flowchart penalizes schools which don't mask by quarantining hundreds of healthy children, and that's not good for your school. Each time one tests positive with PCR tests that the FDA admits can't facilitate detection and differentiation between SARS-CoV-2 and influenza, which will be withdrawn from EU status in December. The truth is, Dewine, the ODH, and the CDC are completely controlled by those trying to take over this country. Dewine's policies are based off the CDC. The CDC owns 57 vaccine patents, it sells 4.2 million in vaccines each year, it has a lot of, it works with a lot of developmental things with vaccines. The CDC has never isolated a COVID specimen, but it admits on its website that it created one out of stock solutions to mimic the virus, so therefore there are, there is no way to test for variants. The CDC admits masks are not protective against smaller airborne particles, but we see mask or warrant cases rise. We saw this in a lot of different countries last year. School-aged children only have a 0.003% chance of dying for COVID, but 14,000 people have died, according to VAERS, from the vaccines they plan to approve for the children. If the CDC cared about your health, why does the CDC just overrule their own advisory panel and recommend boosters? Why does the CDC work with partner organizations to increase vaccine update? Why are the COVID-19 protocols killing the patients in the hospitals? And why does the Ohio Board of Pharmaceuticals ban the sale of hydroxychloroquine and ivermectin if people who want to take it so they don't get COVID tell them that's why they want it? Fauci still has 108 other bioweapons. It's time to fire those who have no custodial authority to make medical decisions for our children and/or pull the children out and defund those schools. It's unconscionable-
Thank you for your comments.
-children have shields for adults. Thank you.
Thank you.
Melanie Leonie, 5011 Lakeview Drive. I'm a wife and a mom of three and a former classroom teacher with a master's in school leadership, and what is happening in public schools is heartbreaking, personally. I am serving as the Moms for Liberty Chair in Summit County and have currently over 350 members. We're made up of moms, dads, grandparents, aunts, and uncles, and let me be very clear, I have no interest in politics. In fact, I'm a registered independent, if you really want to know, and it is my determination to make sure Moms for Liberty, our personal chapter, stays as nonpartisan as humanly possible. There are many people in this community, in the words of a really good friend, that most of us live in the purple rather than the blue or the, or the red. These are our core beliefs and goals. Our chapter believes in public schools, and it believes in the hearts and the teachers and administrators in this town. Our chapter will always advocate for parent choice, and we will be a voice in the public school. Our chapter will fight to be nonpartisan and is not interested in political agendas, but the reality is our world has changed, and controversial content is obviously finding its way into schools around the nation and unintentionally here in Hudson. Our chapter will ask questions to school leadership and the Board of Education in order to hopefully help support more transparency and clarity around sincere parental concerns toward better understanding and improvement. We have a strong desire to be part of the solution, to have a seat at the table with all and many diverse perspectives, to ensure all students from diverse worldviews feel safe, heard, valued, and empowered, because this is work with children. We do believe that the board and the leadership can fix many of these issues with curriculum review and careful selection, stronger policies, procedures, checks, and balances, and a willingness to really listen to one another. This is where instructional leadership shines. Adversity and change can create an stronger school district, an even stronger school district. We cannot pretend that Hudson is not vulnerable to the current cultural context we live in, but we can build systems to protect our students. One last thing, Moms for Liberty has been communicating with the Northeast Ohio Diversity Center for more details in regards to the curriculum that they will be teaching in Hudson schools. Since their work is proprietary, they are not willing to share it in detail. This can be a little concerning, but we are hopeful, and they are agreeing to have a Q&amp;A with Moms for Liberty, and we would love for the Board of Education and anyone else in the community who is interested can join us. Details can be found on our Facebook page, and a formal invitation will be sent to all of you, and thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Celeste Fland, and I live at 131 Clearhaven Drive. After moving here for the schools, these same schools have failed all three of my children. Failed them in speech therapy, failed them in accommodating sensory processing disorder, failed in communication, as when I asked to be told if my second grader, with anxiety, cried at school. Did I find out from the teacher? No. Did I find out from the school therapist? No. You think you are doing good, but your staff who has to execute this is failing. I find out about my son from a child who complained to me like I was a barista who mixed their drink wrong. Why is he crying all the time? She asked. I knew, I knew back then Hudson had failed my children. I knew when another child of mine needed to be kept back, and I faced a group of smiling adults assuring me it was fine. Again and again, adults with our school have assured me everything was fine, but it is not fine. For these reasons, my children have been removed from Hudson City School District. It is things like this, which is why so many of us are eager for a change in leadership, so that we can have confidence in their services. Protecting adults at the expense of our children is morally bankrupt. Attacking the messenger who helps shine a spotlight on an atrocious pattern of behavior instead of rallying to rout out wrongdoing is abandonment of our duty as adults. It is, however, the Hudson I've come to know in distrust. Rebuilding trust and ensuring our children have an environment that is supportive and healthy is not accomplished by circling blatantly partisan wagons while simultaneously crying politics. Rebuilding trust is done with transparency and accountability. It is done by giving complete access to parents and taxpayers alike, to all our curriculum. It is done by eliminating the loophole that allows teachers to slip in material that never goes in front of taxpayers or parents. This is why you cannot trust your teachers, and neither can we. Give us open access to curriculum, not just once a year, but every day, online and in a public location, so nothing is used without public review.
Thank you for your comments. Yes.
Hello, my name is Nick Lenz, 41 Steeple View Drive. A teacher a few speakers ago spoke about tribalism as being probably the biggest challenge that we have today, and clearly, that's the case. Earlier this evening, I was having a lovely dinner out with my daughter, celebrating her 16th birthday, and came home to put on the stream from the board meeting to see a string of people all dressed in white, which reminded me of cult members from The Leftovers from HBO. Doomsday cult, all focused on one thing, and it's not the well-being of our children. The wearing of masks, you all know, I've sent each and every one of you the data that shows there is no difference, even in the state of Ohio, between masked students and unmasked students when it comes to the infection rates. It seems like science doesn't matter, and it really disappoints me. I know you're not going to change your mind, just like to point out, science is not being followed. It's all about tribalism, you're clearly all better off, aside from maybe one member wearing the white shirts.
Kathy, Kathy Loman, Hudson. As a 30-year Hudson resident and mom of three graduates, I can certainly say Hudson is a great town to raise a family. Our schools are rated some of the best in the country. Since everyone is unique, it can be challenging at times to respect the rights of individuals and avoid divisive, authoritative, impractical, unnecessary, and even harmful decisions that negatively impact others. It can help to remember our school district, including this board, is here to do what's best for kids. It's the entire district's responsibility to enable kids to excel in reading, writing, math, and critical thinking, not biased politics. Critical thinking involves being able to question without fear of retaliation. Indoctrination is what happens when you join a cult. Indoctrination, however, is a theme in ineffective masking for a virus, sexualization of minors, undermining Judeo-Christian values, and diversity programs focused on race instead of diverse viewpoints or experiences. All these agendas retaliate against individuals for questioning them, for applying critical thinking, and reward those who go along with the crowd in the name of social justice. If students question social justice agendas, they're often bullied. Students need to understand social justice, but currently only left- Students need to understand social justice, but currently only leftist agendas are the focus. There's no balance between left and right political agendas in our schools. Lately, parents and students in Hudson and all across the country who have been bringing their concerns to school boards for resolution have also been bullied for questioning indoctrination agendas, not to mention Hudsonites forming so-called nonpartisan groups, which upon inspection are far from nonpartisan, to sweep issues under the rug rather than resolve them. I personally reached out to Hudson parent and our Ohio State rep, Casey Weinstein, multiple times this year for help to resolve serious issues personally impacting me within his district and was ignored. His fanning the flames of masking, D E I, and recent attacks on our mayor aren't helpful. Our mayor, who stood up to protect our children and shed light on this board's pattern of ignoring, dismissing, or minimizing parents' concerns. Hudson's six forty-two writing book was not used at Hiram College, was removed from our high school after six years, and contained sexual and deviant content most agree was unnecessary for students to excel in writing. The mayor's attempt to protect minors is admirable. We all should be protecting our kids. Minimizing concerns, like student masking choice, diversity programs focused on race, and attacks on family values is not admirable. We may not always agree, but we must work together for the benefits of our kids. Hudson had great schools when politics wasn't part of the curriculum. This board must break its pattern of neglect, indifference, and cover-up with its masking and diversity programs. Putting money in biased politics ahead of our kids and family values is wrong.
Thank you for your comments.
It's time to make our students better by removing politics.
Thank you for your comments.
Improving transparency and accountability to parents and put kids first.
Thank you for your comments.
Bill Clausman, Blue Heron Drive, Hudson, Ohio. I was impressed with Mr. Herman's graph. It obviously indicates that Hudson has a relatively low infection rate in the schools, probably because we have the highest rate in Summit County of vaccines. I also note he logically presented the CDC reports, which I happened to hear on TV today. Dr. Risch from Yale, M.D., Ph.D., stated that the CDC cherry picked those two ecological, he called them, as opposed to double-blind study types, and ignored forty others that prove otherwise. What I came to say, though, was like hundreds of millions before me, I had measles before there's a vaccine, chicken pox before there was a vaccine, mumps before there's a vaccine, and I had polio before there's a vaccine. I understand polio. My aunt was very crippled by it. My parents did not restrict my movements, allowing me to go to park every day, which we did all day in those days, go swimming in Lake Anna, Lake Dorothy, attend and visit Summit Lake Park, and visit my uncle's farm for extended stays. Neither my doctor nor my parents recommended that I wear a mask, not because they did not understand the risk of, understand life is a risk, but because they understand life is never without a risk. I have no doubt that if my doctor thought a mask would work and prevent my childhood diseases, he would have instructed me to wear one. If Covid, not a little story here, if Covid were on trial for murder and it offered masking as a defense, what facts would you as a jury consider dispositive? You would look for provable facts. Provable facts are those which have the greatest probative or evidential value. Unprovable facts are those which are no, have no probative or evidential value. Circumstantial facts are those which have the probative or the evidential value assigned by a jury. In Covid's case, a provable fact, a cloth mask will offer protection from a virus that is three micrograms or larger in size. Provable fact, the Covid virus is typically one microgram in size. Provable fact, particles can be seen escaping the size of a cloth mask in what are called vaping tests. The provable fact, the Covid virus can therefore penetrate or escape from a cloth mask. The jury's verdict explains why the CDC has failed to commission a randomized, double-blind study to determine the efficacy of a cloth mask. They already know it doesn't work. It is unfortunate this board failed to honor the wishes of parents of seventy-five percent of our students who opt, chose to opt out.
Thank you for your comments.
If Hudson parents thought it was a problem, they wouldn't have, they wouldn't have opted out.[1794.47][1794.47]